Oh. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special North Platte City Council meeting here on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, 5:30 PM. Of course, we're here in the council chambers, calling the meeting officially to order. We'd like to take a moment and observe a moment of silence in remembrance of those that lost their lives on 911, 2001. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Angie, a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Lucas.
Garrett.
Here.
Sanders.
Here.
Speaker.
Here.
Thank you. Open Meetings Act. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. No formal vote or action will be taken at this meeting. I repeat, no formal vote or action will be taken at this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to have a public hearing on ordinance number 4221 to adopt the budget standard, excuse me, budget statement and to appropriate city monies for fiscal year 2025-2026. The council will officially vote on this ordinance on September 16th, which is, of course, our next official city council meeting. To begin the public hearing, our own Don Miller, Finance Director, has a brief presentation. So I am calling the public meeting, excuse me, public hearing officially open. Don, you have the floor. Hopefully, the clicker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Kelleher, members of the city council, Mr. Grosseth and Mr. Trashinsky. In accordance with LB 148 passed by the Nebraska Legislature in 2020, we are holding tonight's budget hearings separately from any regularly scheduled meeting. We have three copies of the 2526 budget available for the public, and we are providing this presentation outlining key provisions of the city of North Platte's proposed budget. Key provisions of the 2526 budget include an increase of $189,275 or 2.49% to the total dollar property tax request over the prior year. Again, this is a 2.49% increase in the total dollars of asking. And then the second key provision is a 4.461 tenth of a cent or 1.23% reduction of the city's levy from 36.2423 to 35.7962 cents per hundred dollars of valuation. This slide provides a graphical representation of the budgeted revenues for the general fund in the total amount of $41,643,209. This exceeds the city's 2425 budget by approximately 1.78 million or 4.5%. $1,475,000 of this difference consists of the additional $725,000 we are budgeting for sales tax and the $750,000 more being budgeted for beginning cash balance. An additional $13,517,953 reserved cash balance is not reflected in the 2526 general fund budgeted revenue. The pie chart illustrates the portion of the total that each of the various revenue categories comprise. Sales tax makes up 11.575 million or 27.8% of the general fund revenues. A summary containing both '25 and 2026 budgeted revenues can be found on page 15 of the budget. Slide four provides a breakdown of the 2526 budgeted general fund expenditures totaling $38,233,553 by department. This amount exceeds the 2025 budgeted expenditures of $37,171,056 by just over $1 million or $1,062,497. This slide illustrates that the budgets of the city's three largest departments, police, fire, and public service, make up just over three-fourths or 75.09% of the general fund. A summary containing both '25 and '26 budgeted expenditures can be found on page 21 of the budget. This slide compares the city's total 2526 budget with that of 2425 by fund type. The total expenditures in the darkened line reflect a decrease of just over $6.7 million or 2.44% from 2025 to 2026's budget. Most of this decrease is in the other funds category and is primarily because of reduced expenditures being budgeted in the recreation infrastructure and American Rescue Plan Act or the ARPA fund. We have provided a handout around the table tonight that provides a detailed listing, thank you, Mayor, of the city's 37 funds, and we've color-coded those by fund type. And at the very bottom of the handout, it's a summary that shows the totals that should then also tie back to this particular slide. Slide number six compares the city's proposed mill levy with the current 2425 levy. The total levy being proposed for 2526 of $35.7962 cents per hundred dollars of valuation reflects a decrease of approximately 4.5 tenths of a cent or 1.23% from 2425's levy. Reviewing records dating back to 1998, prior to the city's current levy, the last time the levy was below 40 cents was in 1999, when it was $38.75 cents per hundred dollars of valuation. This slide provides a graphical view of the mill levy information we just reviewed on the previous slide. The graph reflects the city's mill levy being proposed for 2526 of $35.7962 cents per hundred dollars of valuation compared to the levies of the previous 12 years. Thank you for your time this evening and for your efforts and interest relative to the city's budget process. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Don. We reserve the right to call you back. As I mentioned earlier, this is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience has any questions or, excuse me, any comments, please approach the mic, tell us who you are, and make your comment. We will wait a whole minute since this is a state-required event. Somebody could walk in nine minutes late and decide they want to make a comment. It could happen. See? I was right. I'm sorry, Ed. I just made a joke and you happened to walk through the door, so I apologize. We're just waiting one minute to see if anyone has a comment here in the public hearing, and we're about...
I was going to thank you for waiting for me.
Thank you. Twenty seconds away from being done with our one minute here. Okay, if someone would motion to close the public hearing, please.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Ricker to close the public hearing. We don't have the voting rigged up tonight, so all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate so by raising your right hand. That is seven. Anyone opposed to closing a public hearing, please raise your left hand. Zero. Seven to... Zero. Seven to zero. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at the city council meeting on September 16th at 5:30. There is a presentation by MPBD at 4:30. That is a work session. Please be here for that meeting if at all possible. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your attendance tonight. Sorry, Ed. I appreciate you being here.
Just raised my weights per hour a little bit.
Well, you were 10 minutes late, so I should be docking you, probably.
It's alright to close the...